Okay. So, good afternoon. This open meeting of the Board of Appeals is being conducted hybrid pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Town of Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals is convening in person and by Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please be aware, if you are on video conference, that other people may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Please also mute if you're not talking. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair, that's me, notes otherwise. Okay. So I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the Town of Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is Thursday, September 11th, 2025. It is 1:03 PM. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as drafted?
Second.
So Lisa makes that motion. John seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda is approved. This is the public comment section of the meeting. If there's anyone in the audience or online that has something to bring to the attention of the board that is not contemplated on today's agenda, this would be the time to speak. Again, it's for anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who had a public comment today? Seeing none. Is there anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. So we will move on. Approval of the minutes. So we have, we had quite a long list of minutes to get through. I read through all of them and I didn't have any issues or I had, there was one slight typo. On, it is super duper minor, on the March 13th minutes, page six, the motion three to reconsider, just Elisa's last name was a lowercase a and it could have been a capital, but.
It goes on around here.
I know. But other than that, I didn't have, there were like, I didn't have any other typos or comments or anything. So great job on the minutes. Did anybody else have any issues with the minutes? No. Okay. So I could take a motion to approve the minutes as drafted with the one minor capital A inclusion on page six of March 13th, 2025 minutes.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so Lisa makes that motion. Elisa seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion, the motion passes. The minutes are approved. Okay, so moving on to new business. The application for nine Hinsdale Road requested to be continued to the October, what's our October date meeting? Is it the 16th? Okay, so that requested to be continued to October 16th. Would someone make a motion to grant that request?
Second.
Okay, so Elisa made the motion and John seconded. So this is a motion to continue application 2025-0023, nine Hinsdale Road to our regularly scheduled October 16th meeting. Sorry, you guys made the motion and seconded, right? Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes. The next application is 2025-0014. I'm going to step away for that and John, you're going to chair.
Okay. All right. Let's, so, application 1425, George and Tiffany Cloutier for the applicant.
Okay.
Is this on?
Sounds it.
Okay. Linda Williams for the applicant, Tiffany Cloutier, Andrew Vorse is here as well, and Steve Cohen should be up there, but I can't see if he's up there. Nikki, is he up there?
We lost him. Hold on.
Okay.
Okay, I'll bring him over as soon.
Great. Okay. I gave you 64 pages of reporting documentation, which was even extreme for myself, to give you an overview. I gave you all the votes and whatnot from town meeting from several years ago and maps and everything else. So I'm just going to give you an overview and answer questions and then punt it to Steve Cohen. It is a unique situation in the zoning district within which it is situated, which is part of the variance language. It's, Cloutier's owns three lots. They used to have rights in the middle of the paper roads because the town had not taken them. So there was a handshake agreement many years ago with Tiffany's husband, George, who's since passed away. That's how we got here. He was handling all of this and then he died and now she's trying to rectify the situation or at least finesse the situation. The three lots were on the same deed, transferred on the same deed from the very beginning, back in several decades ago, actually. When the town got into this agreement with the Cloutiers, they took the paper roads, which they do yard sale paper roads all over the place. The one snag in this particular scenario was that the railroad bed is a registered land quartered piece of property. So when they took the roads under the handshake deal to then convey substantial portions of those roads to the Cloutiers, so they have one consecutive lot, they also knew that they had to go back to Land Corps to get rid of the registration for the land, for the railroad bed. So it became unregistered land and was much easier to transfer to the Cloutiers. In return, the Cloutiers were giving the town certain open space. That never transpired for a number of reasons, largely because George died. So now we are at a situation where she has a young child and she lives in Florida. So we're left with this situation. We have been waiting for, I think, eight months now, if not longer, to get in here, but we were waiting to have a conversation with town council, who I see is up there, the attorney for town council is up there, to see what the discussions were going to be with the town, interested in taking the property that was in executive session, which we're legally not privy to. But if you look at the maps that I've given you, the town land is all the way around these lots. They've already taken the lots from the other property owners, which some of them were in the same situation where they had three lots separated by these paper roads. And there's only one other case I know of, and that's in Quinnett, where there's four of them in a row, the same situation with these old paper roads. So if you look at some of the maps, if you had time to look at the 64 pages, you will see where these roads are and where the railroad bed is. For criteria for zoning relief is soil shape and topography. And we have soil because most of the lot is sand. I've given you pictures of the lots all the way down to the water. We have shape because it's a very unusual situation with all three lots now separated by town-owned roads because they took them and not conveyed them. So now we've got a shape issue. And topography because it goes over the cliff and down to the water. So if you wanted grounds to, I laid them out very specifically in the addendum as to how to grant a variance for this, to take the total of the ground cover that would have been theirs if, had the lots been combined, and put it all on the house lot, which is above the bluff. So if you look at the map that's on your screen now, the house lot is the top one. And then you see all the paper roads that intervened between the three lots. It's a very strange situation. It would be a win-win for the town to own all of these properties without having to go to Land Court, without having to do anything. It's a win-win because then she gets credit for 4,500 square feet on, and that's actually less than she would have been entitled to had all this taken place, 4,500 square feet on the house lot on the top of the hill, which borders Low Beach Road, and the town gets the other lots. The town is running out of open land to do mitigation. If they're doing a project, the state is going to require mitigation land to be left in open space. Plus, if the town gets all that land, those two lots and all the paper roads and the railroad bed consecutively, it actually completes the entire town-owned land from below the bluff all the way to the water, from basically Codfish all the way down to Navy Base. This is the one piece that's right in the middle of all that stuff. So it is a win-win for everybody. You do have grounds for the variance relief. Nothing we are doing, contrary to what you may hear, and I reserve the right, Mr. Chairman, to respond, should comments be made that are inaccurate. Nothing we are asking for is affecting the easement to the Topland Properties, which is basically Cannonberry. When these properties were developed many years ago, decades ago, Topland Properties reserved an easement on this lot, which was part of Topland, all the way down the south side of the property, all the way to the beach. Nothing we're doing or asking for is going to impact that easement. It's for their use. We're not touching it. We're not taking anybody off it. We would put people on it, but we're not taking anybody in Cannonberry that has rights in that easement off it because it's running in benefit of those Topland properties. Lots 10 and 11 on, you can see them up there on the north side, are not part of this application. We're not asking for anything of those. The town owns that. We're not involved with 10 and 11 at the moment. Maybe the town will do a tad for tad on those, but we're not talking about 10 and 11. It doesn't matter what's said. As far as view rights are concerned, there are no view rights on Nantucket. We have said it many times that if you want view rights, you're going to have to buy your view rights. But nobody has any view rights through this property. They have an easement on the south side. There are plenty of places to go, two down to the water, all along Low Beach, bless you, and all along Ocean Avenue. Whatever happens on lots 10 and 11 is outside the scope of this application. But there are no view rights. We have, as you saw with the pictures that I gave you, there is substantial old growth hedging between the house and the water, I mean, and Low Beach. Nobody's planning on touching those. And there's a house in the way. And there's a house on the north side, in a way. So view rights are not part of this. We're not touching the easement. They're off the table, outside the scope of this application, outside of the jurisdiction. In the end, it makes sense to grant the variance and the credit for the other two lots. The town gets those lots. It simplifies the problem. There's no administrative burden of having to go, the town having to go get rid of the railroad bed, go through that exercise and expense up at the state in order to convey those initial, go back to the initial agreement, handshake agreement with the Cloutiers to give them those paper roads. They really are not interested in those paper roads. They're interested in giving the town the property and they're interested in getting the credit on their house lot for what they would have had, had all this taken place years ago. But it simplifies the entire matter and this is sort of a new approach. And then on top of it, the town gets open space in which to mitigate other projects that are going to be acquired by the state for open space. So that's pretty much all I have to say at the moment, unless you have questions.
Yeah, thank you. Do any board members have any questions for the applicant at this time? And just for what it's worth, my suggestion was going to be that we hear from the town and the town representatives next and then hear from the butters and then start.
Well, we have, Steve Cohen would like to go.
Okay.
I just, what is this handshake agreement? What does this relate to?
Andrew can speak to what transpired like 10 years ago. I was on the planning board then, but Andrew can speak to the handshake agreement that took place when the town went and took the paper roads. The town had no intention of taking the paper roads until this all came up.
But what is it in regard to?
Before you leave, Linda, I just have, just, I will ask just a simple numbers question.
Please go ahead.
So right now, on the lot where the structures are, you have a total living area of 2,500, give or take.
On the ground.
On the ground.
Yeah.
On the ground. How much will you increase the ground cover?
To 4,500 total.
To 4,500 total?
Yeah. Because the actual amount that they would have gained had all this taken place is somewhere in the 4,600 and change area. I think that's in the addendum as well.
So you're basically, will get 2,500 more on the lot?
2,000 more.
I mean, excuse me, 2,000 more, you're right, on the lot where the house, where the structures exist right now?
Yeah.
Hold on, I didn't get my question answered.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to know.
I wanted to run Andrew for your question, so that's why she asked me.
What is the handshake agreement about?
I could answer that, Jim.
Okay.
This is Stephen Cohen. Before we had Tracy McDonald and the Real Estate Committee, it used to be that all of the yard sale stuff was run through the planning department staff. And so what we would do is work out all the details with Andrew and his staff back when he was in charge of that and then implement it. And the situation that we ended up with here was we worked out all the terms for doing this, but then it never got implemented because even though the town regularly takes and grants yard sale lots, because of the railroad bed and because of the title, the complicated registered title on this particular lot that's different than, than many others, it has been, you know, more than a decade now and it hasn't happened. So the, the, the deal was, we did this the way we used to do it and then it never got implemented because of the railroad bed lot, which is why we're seeking the variance now.
Okay, so it was the custom.
Correct.
On yard sales, all the yard sales in Matticat, Tom Nevers, Surfside, they're all over the place that have been conveyed to the butters.
Can I ask another?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
What is the ground cover of the general, generally of the adjacent lots? I mean, they seem to be around the same size. The one directly adjacent to it is a little bit bigger. And I'm just curious, in terms of scale of development, you know, this is going to go to 4,500 square feet of allowable ground coverage. What is the allowable of the adjacent lot, the other neighboring lots, to see if it's in, in character with the scale of the neighborhood?
I think it's in the addendum. They're complicated numbers. I might have been on that map that just came up, down on the lower left side. They are all.
What page is that?
Total, it's 4,600 square feet.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the neighbors. Did you do any information on the neighboring lot?
I believe I put their aerials in there and I may have put more information on those in the 64 pages, but some of them are bigger than ours. They have a, they've already divested themselves of those other lots below the bank, all the way down to Codfish, so.
I, no, that's my question. I know they're 1.64 according to the town, but they're compliant at the moment, even with the other lots being divested.
I can't speak to that, but Andrew may be able to speak to that.
I looked at them all. I included them and I didn't do a deep dig. But you can see on that map right there that they used to all have those three lots.
I understand that.
Yep.
I get that.
So Lisa, to your question, the three lots that are.
Andrew.
Oh, sorry, Andrew Vorse for the applicant.
And you represent the same people.
The trust.
Got it.
Yep. The three lots to the north, as you head towards the center of Sconset, are three individual lots. They're, they're in the LUG district and they, they do.
Yeah.
Okay, the three that are going towards town, yeah.
Yes, in the yellow area. Those three don't have any adjacent land, you know, down below the bank. So those are, those are basically three non-conforming lots that don't meet the LUG 3 standard, right? And they, they have about somewhere 2,000 to 2,500 square feet. Across the street, which is the SR 20 district, it's 12 and 1/2 percent, right? So on a minimum sized lot, that's 2,500 square foot per minimum sized lot. So for the larger lots on some of the small streets that are like double that, 30,000 or 40,000 square feet, they're similar in size to this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I know. I'm looking at the immediate neighborhood. When you look at the GIS map, you know, the, the scale of the buildings, 4,500 is a lot of the ground cover on a lot of this size. So that's my concern, that because nobody else has the benefit of these other properties, all of a sudden you're going to have this lot that's going to have a lot more density on it and might feel out of scale to Low Beach Road.
I would say that it's, it comes in at about 9%, so it's halfway between the 3% and the 12 and 1/2. So it's, it's in the middle.
But the guys on the easterly side of Low Beach Road are, they're existing non-conforming lug three, but they're, you know, that's why I was curious, how much is their covering in terms of percentage on their lots?
Right, right. It's, it's 3% to 4% on those because of their, their size and they don't have the benefit of the extra land.
So this will be twice as much ground coverage as what they have?
On that side, but similar to the properties that are directly across the street.
Yeah, in percentage, but the lots are smaller.
Well, I think if you look at the, at the lot right next door, that one has a lot of ground cover on it directly to the southeast.
You're right, the one with the multiple buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at that on the town website.
Just a little clarification. So the two lots that are closest to the water, they're unbuiltable anyway.
Right.
Right, so.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, well, literally.
Well, I'm on Concom, so theoretically, that's all I can say.
But they would not be allowed any ground cover, square footage in the first place.
No, but the town, as you can see, took all the rest of these lots and they would just blend in with the rest of the town lots.
So it's not like you're asking to borrow square footage from buildable lots to add to this lot?
Let me, let me try to address that.
Not, no, that's not correct. Steve?
Yeah, so what we have here is a situation where we own all three of these lots and there are paper roads that run in between them. And normally, we would just acquire the paper roads and then have one big lot and by right could do 4,600 square feet of ground, of ground cover. Now, even though those beachfront lots are unbuiltable, the ground cover still applies. So we would by right, after going through the yard sale process, be able to build 4,650 square feet of ground cover on the, on the Low Beach Road lot. So, you know, and the town has agreed with us, agreed to, to, to give us the, the yard sale lots. And the only thing holding it up is the Land Corps process and the, and the railroad bed.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand.
So the 4,600 square feet that would be by right if we connected them?
I totally got you. So where on the lot closest to Low Beach Road that has the structure on it, are there any wetlands or?
No, no.
Is that completely buildable? Just, you'd have to stick to setbacks and otherwise it's complete upland.
Yeah, and setbacks from.
And how big is that portion?
Okay. Just, I'm just understanding what's going on, trying to understand.
How big is that portion? Is that the 1.64 acres? Is the 1.64 acres that's put in the town, is that the total square footage of these three lots combined?
No, it's, the 1.6, I believe, is just that one lot.
Is there, is there a survey of just that area that gives an area?
I believe I put everything I had in that 64 pages.
227 times 264. Here we can do the math.
Yeah, there's an area on that plan right there.
I don't see it. I was looking at that. I didn't see an area at the top.
And then there's a chart down in the lower left, but there's an area out there.
Is there?
Andrew, is it down in the lower left where we had that thing?
What page?
It's right under the house. Go back up to that lot. It's right, literally right under the house. You're going to have to enlarge it. Or you enlarge it on your thing.
Is the map in parcel and the name and the deed and page number?
Because there is a map in here that has it.
Okay.
We can look for it.
And I have another question about, the railroad bed is the yellow, is that right?
Yes.
And then the green was the yard sale that they never got?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the orange?
And so that would have attached those lots.
The orange is, if you go down, the orange is the way that people, what's the orange?
The town was going to retain the orange?
Access, okay.
That sort of goes up to the other lots.
And where is the easement, to Joe's point?
Easement's on the south side. You can barely see it. It's only like five feet wide.
Oh, I see it, the dotted line.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
And it's kept open and the Topland Cannonberry has full access to it.
So, so they'll never get the railroad bed, is that correct?
Unless the town goes to the state and gets it off the rent.
Okay, so the only thing they're waiting for are the green parcels.
And they're pointless to us because it's not contiguous.
We, we could get the railroad bed, it's just taking forever.
Yeah, and the town has not been willing to do it.
So I think, I think the 1.64 includes all these lots because lot, parcel 15 is 38, that's on there. The one above looks like somebody wrote in 419, maybe?
No, 49, isn't it?
No, it's 4.
I can't see it from here.
419, 419.
But then you have to add in all the green, which is what we were going to get.
Right, right, no, I'm going to do that, 13.
Each of those lots is about, is about an acre. And the, and then Low Beach Run is a little bigger.
It'd be helpful just to know how, how big that, that lot itself.
It's in the, it's in the chart. There's a chart in your packet.
Okay, well, find me the chart.
I don't have the pack in front of me, you guys do.
You want to?
But there is a chart in there that we put all these details on it.
Okay.
So I, if I could just sort of focus us here, we have a lot that if we were able to go through the Land Corps process, would by right have 4,650-ish square feet of ground cover. And what we're asking the town to do is two things. One, give us the, you know, almost that ground cover for the front lot. And then two, let it happen in a, in a situation that allows us to donate two acres of land to the town, which the town could really use for MISA mitigation purposes. It would be a huge value to the town to have, between the yard sale land and the land we donate, they have two and 1/2 to three acres of land that would be unrestricted conservation land that would be available for MISA mitigation. So there would be a huge benefit to the town and a, and just relieve the burden to my client of having waited a decade now for this, for this to be resolved. Whereas normally, this is something that the zoning board and the town just do, you know, perfunctory. The yard sale process and relief for this stuff is not controversial at all. And, and like Linda said, despite the concerns to the neighbors, we're not doing anything to their easement and we're really not doing anything to their view because if you look at this, the, the view from the street is really a vegetation and a little bit of a roof line. And there might be a little bit more of a roof line, but not really. And you've got tons of public access out here. You've got the, you've got a public parking lot with a path to the beach. You've got, you know, the old, you know, the town owns all the land around this. So there's plenty of public access, plenty of water views for, for anyone.
Thank you. Board members, if there are, please let me know if you have any other questions. Otherwise, I'd like to hear from the town because there's been a lot of representations made about what the town wants and we haven't seen or heard from them at all. And then I would like to get to the butters as well. So either Tracy or Amy? Amy?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy Questle with KP Law. So I'm going to try, I'm going to try and simplify this, but I, and I'm also trying to confirm that I understand what's going on. There are three distinct lots and there's also paper streets and a railroad bed. And it's my understanding that they're looking for the total, the total square footage of the three lots that they own and they're trying to use that as ground cover. That was my original thought, but now it sounds like they're also using the green areas in their calculation for lot cover, is that correct?
No, it's not correct.
So just the three lots. Okay, so.
Because we're not, we don't have the green areas, so we're just talking about what we own.
Okay, so what, what I'm here for is just to point out a few things to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is that Town Meeting authorized the sale of the green areas, but that does not, that does not mean that the sale has to happen. What hap, Town, Town Meeting gave the town the authority to sell those lots, but it's not guaranteed that the lots get sold. The Town Meeting vote does not mean that those lots are going to be sold. It only means that there is permission to sell them. So the lots have not been sold. The paper streets obviously have not been sold. The railroad bed is, is a different, completely different area. It's not just the Land Corps process that the town would have to go through. The railroad was taken for open space and recreation purposes, which makes it Article 97. And Article 97 of the Constitution provides that it must remain in public open space. And so to, to take that out of Article 97 is a 2/3 vote by Town Meeting, 2/3 vote by the legislature and 2/3 vote by the, by the Senate. Before any of that can even happen, EOHEOEA, the Executive Office of Environmental, Energy and Environmental Affairs, have to approve a substitute lot that, you know, is, is in kind with this same thing. So the railroad bed is really off the table. It's really not, it's not really feasible, it's not feasible at all. really not, it's not really feasible, it's not feasible at all. And right now, the, what the zoning board has to look at is that the green areas are owned by the town. And that's it. They're owned by the town. They haven't been sold. They are, they are owned by the town. They are not owned by the applicant. And then the other thing I do want to point out is that there's been a lot of representation that the town will obtain two lots. Again, there is no agreement that the town will obtain these two lots. And then the only other point that I did want to point out, but like, one of you already did, which is that the, the two lots are, the two lots, the two ocean lots are, they're, they're unbuildable.
Thank you.
Can we make a correction to something she just said?
Sure.
Yeah, because it's not correct.
Thank you. I just, I do question the representation that the, basically, the sewer bed lot in front of this property is owned for open space purposes. I believe it is considered Lot 23 on the land court plan, which was taken, there's an order of taking for sewer purposes that was filed by the town. And the town meeting warrant article that was passed in 2012 authorizes the transfer of this portion of the land from sewer purposes to the Board of Selectmen for conveyance. So I do think the rest of the property was deeded by Reb Johnson to the town. So that all this, this is, as you can imagine, a big, long string of the railroad bed. And all the unsold pieces were granted to the town for open space purposes. But the section in front of this, which is adjacent to the former sewer beds, was taken by the town for sewer purposes. A separate, I believe a separate certificate was never issued, and that's one of the complications here. But I don't believe that it does require the open space. Regardless of all that, the sewer bed is not in play here. And I think it is important to remember that if this was one lot, portions of the lot that might be in wetlands or, you know, quote, unbuildable, that area still counts for ground cover. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the information regarding the, regarding Article 97 was provided by the applicant in a memo to the town April 12, 2025. So the applicant has acknowledged that it was purchased for open space and Article 97 purposes.
Okay, thank you. If, if I may, question Attorney Questle, is the town interested in, is there an agreement in place for those bottom two lots?
There's no agreement in place.
If I, if I could, I think the town has an interest in it, and I think that the town would benefit from it. There's no deal in place, but if it would make the zoning board feel better, we could put deeds in escrow as part of this, to make the, so that there's no idea about a bait and switch.
Okay, thank you. Let's, we can cross that bridge if, if we come.
Yeah, we have to be careful about deferring action in any decision, decision from the ZVA to another entity, but we couldn't really sell, we couldn't convey them unless she gets the credit, basically, because she still has them.
Oh, what, hold on, Jim, do you have, do you have something?
Yeah, just for our counsel, they mentioned this, the town has a need for this MEPA land. So why are we in need of MEPA?
Sure, I can answer that, Jim.
Steven, I think he was asking Attorney Questle.
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah, but, because he's the owner, so, oh, okay.
I think he meant, he meant MESA, M-E-S-A.
Oh, MESA.
Yeah, which is for habitat.
And we, we, this specific space we need, the town needs for mitigation?
Not necessarily. It would be that specific area.
Okay. We could use other town problem.
Right. And we have been told that this area would qualify by the applicant. We haven't been told by any, by natural heritage or by, by MESA itself.
Okay.
I think I can answer that more specifically.
Thank you.
I'm Tracy McDonald. I'm the real estate specialist for the town. The town has a comprehensive permit for mitigation. When we do natural heritage permits, we have to often trade for that. And so in, within the comprehensive permit, we get credits. So although we don't have a deal, we could evaluate this through our consultant to see if we could get credits. And those credits are based on square footage, and, and then we could use those in the future, if necessary, as part of the comprehensive permit.
Okay.
So that's kind of how that works. I do want to say one other thing about the railroad bed. The, the railroad bed is a combination of two things. It was an eminent domain taking for sewer purposes, as Andrew noted. And then there was a deed from the Norwood Farm Trust of the fee in the lots, the one straight lot all the way across that was subject to that eminent domain taking. And then that deed specifically had a warrant article attached to it for open space and conservation. So vetting that out through the land court with those deeds attached and that one certificate of title is how that would work. I would say that it would be hard to argue it wouldn't be Article 97 with that warrant article attached. So that's that. The other thing I wanted to raise is that although we can talk about the value to the town and all of the rest of it, it does require procurement. And the two adjoining parcels, the ones that directly abut their main parcel, I think they're called Parcel 10 and Parcel 11, they're a total of, they're a total of 13,456 square feet together. When we evaluate the disposal through the yard sale program, we used to do, always do an RFP, request for proposals. So standard procedure was that we would release the RFP and a butters could bid and make a proposal. And then, you know, the lot could be disposed of. Then it kind of changed a little bit. And the way we do it now is if the value is over $35,000, we have to do an RFP. And so we, that, the real estate assessment committee assesses that, with, you know, every transaction goes to them. They evaluate the parcel. There's a price factor per square foot suggested, and they make a recommendation. And based on that, we calculate it, we release the RFP. So at 13,456, the current price factor is $7.75 a square foot, which would make the purchase of these Parcel 10 and 11, which abut their property, $104,284,000. So I would have to RFP it. And if the lots are gifted, the select board has to accept them. So two separate things. It's procurement and then the acceptance.
Mr. Chairman, we're not asking about 10 and 11. We're not talking about it. They're not part of the application. It's something that, as Tracy knows, is way outside of what we're doing here today.
It is, but I just wanted to make sure that the board was fully informed. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for some of our?
This is Tracy, yeah. Sorry, I'm, you, I'm still trying to get my arms around this railroad parcel. So there was a taking, so the town owns it. And then the town?
No, 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 no. The railroad parcel was, was deeded. And so we had the original order of taking.
Right.
But then the fee was still sort of in there. And so then we had a separate deed in fee.
Okay, so the taking didn't?
The takings were, the other takings of the paper roads were separate and part of a separate thing.
And they're unregistered.
Okay, so we owned it twice?
Essentially.
Any other questions for Tracy or Amy? Yeah? Okay. Let's, I believe there are some butters who are interested in speaking. I saw some hands online, but let's go to the people in the audience first.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I reserve the right to respond.
Understood. Thank you. Please.
Good afternoon. My, my name's Anthony Vale.
Perfect, thank you.
I live at 8 West Wick, which is just off Cannonbury. I just want to be sure that Sarah Alger is not present, because I frankly was expecting that she would address you on our behalf. But seeing that she's not here, I'm not sure what happened there. I'll be.
Sir, excuse me, she is here. She has her hands raised.
Sarah Alger does? Well, then I'm gonna sit down, because, basic rule, if you hire a lawyer, you don't start talking yourself.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring her over for sure.
Why don't you bring, yeah, if you could bring Sarah over, that'd be great, Nikki. Thank you.
Sarah, you have the floor.
Hi. Thank, thank you very much. So I really actually don't even know where to start here. It's so, it's so confusing. There are all these representations being made about handshake agreements. I, I didn't know the town could make a handshake agreement, quite honestly, and, and other agreements. And yet, there actually don't seem to be any agreements in place. So this entire thing seems premature to me. I, I think if you were going to come and make representations about what the town wants and would agree to, you'd, you'd work with the people in the town that have the actual authority to make those agreements first, get those agreements in place, and then come to this board and present a unified application. It doesn't seem to be fair to this board to put the zoning board in the position of having to decide whether or not other entities in the town will or won't agree to things. Putting that aside, this variance situation, it just doesn't, it just doesn't fly. If you look at 13932A, which sets forth the variance standard, it says that the board has to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography of such land, and especially affecting such land restructures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant. And the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter. Well, right off the bat, this variance would, in fact, substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of this chapter, which was to regulate ground cover. There would be substantial detriment to the public good in that you'd have, as Ms. Botticelli pointed out, very intense development along Low Beach Road in an area where the other properties don't have such intense development. There isn't substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the, to the applicant. The applicant owns the land. They, it's what they bought when they bought the land. They bought three lots that don't, that aren't contiguous. They were never, they were never going to get the benefit of that ground cover. So they're in the same position that they were in when they bought the land with, perhaps the one exception, that they now no longer own the fee in, in the paper roads that abut them. But there isn't anything here that would justify the grant, the grant of a variance. And I, I know this board has always been very reluctant to grant variances. And I think that this should be a case where, in fact, they don't grant it. You don't grant this variance. If they, if the applicant wants the benefit of the ground cover of the other lots, then they should take the time and go through, do what they need to do to get control of the roadways and the railroad bed, get a unified property, and then, and then, and then they would, and then they would have the benefit of the variance, of the, what they're looking for the variance for. They could combine the parcels and get the ground cover. There's no need for a variance here. The fact that this is taking time is inconvenient, I grant you, and time consuming, but I think getting the ground cover is probably worth that time. This board shouldn't be in a position of putting, putting in place a variance that is unjustified, that will harm the rest of the neighborhood, that would give people ground cover that they're not otherwise entitled to, and would allow them to go ahead with their marketing plan to sell this property and as, as a much larger compound than what's currently there. They have plenty of ground cover as it is. There's absolutely no reason for this board to grant the variance, and I would respectfully ask that you deny it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we respond to that?
Let's see if there are any other members in the public first. Anybody else in the public before we go online? Oh, hello, Emily Molden.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I also just wanted to make a couple of comments about this application and proposed variance. Clearly, there's a history between the property owner and the town. That certainly is not in question. But at this point in time, as I think Ms. Alger just clearly stated, the town has not proceeded with disposing of these parcels for one reason or another. And I'm certainly not gonna put myself in a position of guessing what all the reasons are for that having not taken place as of yet. So today, this board is looking at the proposal of combining the lot area of these non-contiguous lots to increase the ground cover for this particular parcel. I think that is concerning for us because it may invite other properties on island that are not contiguous to come before you and make similar requests for different reasons to combine lot area for a ground cover increase. I think it is also important to point out, in addition to Ms. Botticelli's point, that this particular property will now be really kind of out of alignment with its adjacent properties within the same zoning district. But it is also a sensitive area. The, the plan that the board has been looking at from the packet with the, the green and the yellow paper roads, I don't know if it's possible to take a look at that again, but just at the lower edge of the lot that has the building on it, I don't, certainly don't know how old this plan is or how accurate it is, but there is a dotted line that's labeled Edge of Coastal Dune. And assuming that that isn't just a made-up line, and the coastal dune does extend that far up, then there will be some buffer zones from that onto the northernmost parcel there that will condense the development up closer to the road. So it is also a sensitive area that I think is important to keep in mind here. And overall, I think that it just, I would echo Ms. Alger's sentiment that it sort of seems like this is putting the cart before the horse somewhat. And then it would be more appropriate to have the parcels all disposed of properly and then have them come back before the board for the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Or should we go online?
Mr. Chair, we, we do have one hand raised online.
Okay.
Jeffrey Drawson, just give me one second.
Okay, thank you.
While you're doing that, may I just ask a quick, another math question? How many, how much more ground cover is allowed on this lot as it is right now? None? We're at max. Okay.
They're over. I did the quick math. Yeah, they're over. They're only allowed 1,800 on this lot, I think, as it stands.
Is that?
2,000. Well, I did the quick math. I mean, one of the, my, I think it would be really helpful to have a plan and a chart. Not that, and that doesn't mean that I'm necessarily in favor.
The chart's on page 41 of your page.
It, it doesn't include the buildable lots. So how big is the buildable lot? I did the quick math. It looks like it's 60,000 square feet times 3% would give you 1,800 square feet of coverage. If you combine them all at 3%, you'd get like 4,200. In a zoning district, that normally gets 3,600. So I do think the scale is a question, particularly because you're putting all that ground cover on one lot that's only 60,000 square feet.
But in addition to asking about if there's any ground cover left, where, you know, where it says, I think you said Edge of Dune? Is that what it says? I can't, it's too blurry.
The proximity of Edge of Coastal Dune.
Coastal Dune. So from a Concom standpoint, which I don't know what that is, what would, how far away would they be with the new regulations? Would they be allowed to build from that coastal edge of Coastal Dune? In other words, with? In other words, with the zoning setbacks and then with the Concom regulations, where would that then put the extra 2,000 square feet on that lot?
They probably couldn't build that, let's face it. I mean, if they did, it would be up towards where the house is now, in the garage, and maybe something.
I guess I'm not getting a sense of scale of that lot, like how far from this Edge of Coastal Dune. And again, this isn't the Concom, this is the ZVA. I'm curious that delineation, that dotted line of the dune, where the Concom-
The no-build there is 50 feet.
What's that?
The no-build from the coastal dune is 50 feet.
50 feet?
But this is also an old plan, so who knows if that dune is there?
We changed the regulation on July, on January 4th. I don't want to speak to Concom issues, but I'm the only Concom member in here.
Well, I'm just curious. I'm just curious what that would be.
I think we're getting off topic.
Yeah, a little bit.
Well, I'm just trying to visualize where the 2,000 square feet, if we did grant what they're asking, where the structure would be. It's just, I'm just trying to get an idea.
No, no, I understand and I appreciate that. But it seems like instead of deciding what's before us, we're sort of like helping them get where they want to be when I, I mean, my opinion is
I'm impartial. I'm not helping or hurting anybody.
No, you're not directly doing that, but-
I'm just asking questions so I'm as educated as I can be when it comes time to vote.
Well, I don't want to argue with you. To me, it's, we're not, it's, I think that they're here because it's easier to get permission from us than to go through the procedure that's available.
I don't think so.
Oh, well.
Let's finish this discussion.
That's their representation.
But let's, Mr. Drawson has been very patiently waiting, so.
No, we waited 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Drawson. Please go ahead.
I think that Sarah Alger spoke mostly- We have his address, please, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Drawson, can you tell us where your property is?
Yes, I am at 41 Low Beach Road.
Thank you.
Directly across the street. And I will tell you, because I walk it quite frequently, that the edge of the coastal dune is probably a little bit toward Low Beach Road from where it's now currently drawn on that map. I'm not a soil expert, but from just walking on it, it changes from dirt to sand fairly, fairly soon after you clear the area that's now cultivated as their front yard. I think other than that, I thought that Sarah Alger represented the issues that were before the board. And I'm in partner, I'm a, Tony Vale and I have hired Sarah Alger to speak for us. I was just clarifying the issue on where the coastal dune is. If anything, I believe it's more toward Low Beach Road than currently shown on the map.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Williams, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. As far as getting an agreement with the town, we can't deed property unless suggested that it go in escrow, like Steve said. We can't deed property to the town that we're basing our ground cover on. It's, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Steve can probably speak to that better, but there may be something we can work out if it gets continued, which we're gonna ask for. But we have tried for months to get a response through the town's real estate office and town council, which is why we were asked back in May, I believe, to continue it until we got a response from town council. We never got a memo from town council. We never got a real response from town council. Steve can speak to his efforts. And so we didn't know what the town's position was until we heard it today, which is a little unfair since you asked us to continue it to get a response from town council, and we never got the response from town council until like 20 minutes ago. So that's one thing. So maybe there's more conversation Steve can have with the attorney from town council. She's been paying taxes on these lots. They were transferred all along as if they're one piece because they're always on the same deed. They were not transferred on three separate deeds. They were transferred unusually so, on one deed as if it's one piece of property. She has paid taxes on all three of these properties. So if you need another site plan, we can do that, but you have a full site plan in your packets out of the 64 pages. If we want to beef up the chart, we can do that, but everything's on the chart. And it is a unique situation. There are very few others like this anywhere on the island except in Quidnet. They don't have a railroad bed. They don't have any of those particular issues. We have gotten special permits from this board on one of the ones in Quidnet that has the same three lots bisected by one paper road. And we got credit for that. So this is an unusual situation on Nantucket where you're actually bifurcated by other roads, paper roads. We're the ones who generated the process, not the town saying, oh, we got land here, we got railroad bed here, we got paper roads here, let's go after those. The Cludiers are the ones that approached the town to start the process at town meeting with the goal of then transferring, deregistering, or whatever the word is for the railroad bed, and transferring those paper roads where they would get the lower piece, a large protect, a large section of the lower, that one that's closest to the water initially. But now we've got the two lots, we've got they're bifurcated by these paper roads, which were then taken by the town, not transferred because Mr. Cludier died in the middle of all this process. And now Mrs. Cludier is left trying to figure out what to do with this process. Sure, we can waste another 10 years waiting for the town to actually have a response and carry forth the agreement that was made, handshake again, I don't hate using that word, tacit agreement, because we're the ones who generated going to town meeting to take the paper roads. That's not uncommon with the Matick group and that Surfside group. Because when I was on the planning board, I was involved with a lot of these takings and perimeter plans being done after the town took them, conveyed them to the abutters. Yes, if they're over a certain amount, now you gotta RFP it. So they're unbuildable individually, yes, but they're part of her one title, one piece of land that she's paid taxes on all around, all along. So there is a substantial uniqueness. There are no other lots out there like this in the LUG 3 zone, and that's part of what the variance requirement is under 32A. So I disagree with Attorney Alger, but she was expecting that. And so I think we do have soil shape and topography, and certainly an incredibly unique situation that is negatively affecting her because she's paying for them. They're on her deed. She can transfer them to somebody else. But nobody gets any benefit out of those two lots because you can't even access them anymore except by the easement, which is on her property, all three of those. So this is, which comes first, the chicken or the egg here? If you want to continue it so that Steve can have an actually productive conversation with town council, that would be a great thing. So maybe we have an answer by the next meeting.
Well, I'm gonna continue it asking for more information. The chart does not give the ground coverage of the other lots. So that needs to happen. You need to total the lots that you're asking for the coverage on. Tell us what 3% of that is. Tell us what the existing ground cover is on the lot where the house stands, and then give us ground cover figures for the neighbors.
Lisa, thank you.
Not across, not across the street, the neighbors on the easterly side of Low Beach.
Well, basically to the north, because there's nothing to the south, it's Navy Base.
Yeah, that's right, but not, not, oh, sorry, Joe.
Okay.
Even if you have that information, we still ought not to vote for this.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I think it's-
So why, why keep on going?
Because ask for a continuance.
Because we're asking for the continuation.
You don't have to grant it.
Can I, can I make, can I make a couple of quick points? One of them, yeah, just, just to clarify this idea of a handshake deal, I don't like that term either. What it was was staff approval, which was the way this was always done before the new, before Tracy became the land manager and before the React Committee was instituted. So it was done under the customary process of staff approval. The second thing is that I did work with Tracy and Amy on this, and it was our determination that it made sense to go to the zoning board first because all this other stuff doesn't make any sense unless we at least take the temperature of the board to see if it's willing to grant the variance here. So, you know, like, there's a lot of work we can do, but we decided to go to the zoning board first.
So perhaps we should take a temperature of the board.
Well, let me just say one last thing.
Excuse me.
The other thing is-
Hold on, hold on, hold on. No, the other hold on, hold on.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Okay, Amy, you were speaking.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I could just finish one second? We would be, if the board felt that 4,500 square feet was too dense, we could certainly lower that number. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I take extreme exception to what that representative said, that town council was holding this up and that town council was not responding. Every single time Mr. Cohen reached out to me, I called him back, I texted him back. We had many conversations about this. And so that was completely false, what she stated. What it comes down to is that I informed Mr. Cohen that this board, the zoning board of appeals, cannot grant a variance in order to get land. That, that is not, you cannot do that in accordance with 48 Section 10, in accordance with your own zoning bylaw. You cannot grant a variance because they're going to give the town two lots. That's not soil shape topography. So the other thing that I do want to point out that the representative is absolutely wrong about is that the deed, the deed that transferred the three parcels to the current applicant states lots 7, 23, and 34 as shown on a plan entitled Low Beach, Sconset, Nantucket Scale, and it's dated in 1895. I have a copy of that plan. The plan shows three distinct lots. The three distinct lots are separated by the railroad and by a paper street. So there's not, it's not one parcel that was conveyed. It is three lots that are conveyed. It's clear that the deed is in your packet. And then we, I also pulled the plan. So I just did want to clear up those two, those two points that were made. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I never said it was one lot. I said there were three lots on one deed. That's what I said.
Thank you.
Be specific.
Steve, do you think there's any, anything to the fact that three lots were transferred with one deed? What does that mean to you?
I actually don't think it matters. I actually agree with Amy. We are in legal agreements that there can't be a quid pro quo here. And we are in legal agreement that it's always been three lots. And really, the issue is here, like, you know, people with unconnected land that want to connect it by going through the yard sale process, this one has an extreme complication. And what we're trying to do is get the best fix we can for that complication. And that's what we're asking the zoning board to do. And the zoning board, you know, normally would condition that kind of relief on eventually all of these lots being connected. And we, in this case, think it's actually better instead of connecting all the lots, to donate them to the town. But that's not a quid pro quo. And it's not something we want to make a deal to do. We couldn't legally make a deal to do. So I'd like to request, I guess, Mr. Chairman, if you would consider polling the board to see if there's any interest in us working with the town to get more information for you and to see if there's any interest in maybe a smaller number of ground cover. You know, I'd love to move forward if it makes sense and not move forward if it doesn't make any sense.
Sure. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. We do have a hand raised. Jeffrey Drawson would like to speak again.
Okay, let's do, let's do you, Jeffrey, and then we'll do this, we'll poll the board.
I know this is a, but in 1976, when we purchased the land, the reason it was given to us for them being conveyed by three separate, as three separate lots was that the person who owned them said they were unbuildable and that he wanted to get rid of them, and therefore he put them together in order to sell the one lot up on Low Beach Road, but he didn't want to own the other two that were unbuildable. So I know that's hearsay, but that's why we bought the lot on the other side of the road where our home currently is, because we didn't want to own all that land, which would be used, not useful to us and would have led us had the smaller ground cover.
Great. All right, thank you.
We can't verify that.
All right. So, board members. We'll poll here, and why don't we, we'll just go-
Do we have to close public hearing?
It still is.
Okay.
We haven't closed anything. I don't think we should. I think we should.
I'm a hard no. I don't even think this should be in front of us.
I would, in addition to the list that Lisa is requesting answers to, I would also like the applicant to get a determination of if that's where the Edge of the Dune actually is and the current bylaws from the Concom, how they apply to that coastal dune marker.
I would say that I am pretty hard no. I mean, I think I was looking, trying to look at those figures to try to figure out if there was a way to make this more reasonable, but I'm really concerned about the, that amount of ground coverage, even more ground coverage than they have because they're already theoretically over on their lot in relation to the scale of the other buildings in the neighborhood. I think it would be out of, out of place.
Jim?
If I were to vote on this, I would vote no. I'm pretty hard no. I don't see, I mean, all this information is great if we could get additional information, but I don't see how that's gonna change my, my view of this. I think they gotta try to follow whatever procedures there are to obtain that land and then come to us, which I'm not even sure you get at that, so.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I'm leaning no as well without additional information. I'm not sure how much information you're gonna be able to get for all this. So you can sort of make the decision. If you want to continue, you can, but I think you've got a good, pretty good sense of the temperature of the board right now.
Well, if you're going to deny it, I'd rather continue it, A, that's preferable, but I'd rather withdraw it without prejudice, rather than have a negative vote because there may be something that appears.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So if we don't have enough votes to continue it and it doesn't appear we have enough votes, you only need three to continue.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure you, I'm not sure the continuing is gonna make much of a difference.
Okay, then I would rather withdraw it without prejudice.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made. A second, I will go down.
So what's without prejudice mean?
Because we can come back with something else. They could come back with- New information, though. It's gotta be a new application.
But the other way they could.
I don't see how any information is gonna change. I'm just saying, I don't think it should be, I think it should be with prejudice. It shouldn't have been in front of us.
Well, if they make a deal with the town, why can't they come back in front of us again?
If they make a deal with the town, then the only thing that's left is railroad right away. They're almost there. Why do they have to come back to us?
We're not almost there.
Well, it's still right.
I think there could be other circumstances.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, customarily, I don't know if we really do it with prejudice for-
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor to allow the withdrawal without prejudice, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
You didn't have for name.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Steve. I'll see ya.
One. Seventeen.
It's on the tables, on the tables, on the tables. The table says nothing. That's just a, that's right.
Yeah.
Extra information, that's not really helpful.
Was this not, this is continued, this?
So, Madam Chair, I just wanted to confirm that you don't need me for any other hearings?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, everyone. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Okay, our next application is, is application 20250021, Brendan Madigan, 6 Sheep Pond Road, Paul Santos presenting for the applicant. Mr. Santos?
Thank you. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, on behalf of the property owner and applicant, Brendan Madigan. This is a variance request for a property located at 6 Sheep Pond Road. The home that is on the property was originally constructed in 1983. It was relocated on the property in 2010, at that time without the need for any relief from the zoning board of appeals. There are, I believe, three previous ZVA applications on this property that go back to 1978, 1979. 32 in order to relocate the existing dwelling due to the eroding shoreline. Property has been granted an order of conditions for the location of the dwelling that is before you today. And that was issued by the Nantucket Conservation Commission in October of this past year. The plan that you see before you depicts the parcel itself. It is located at the, located on Sheep Pond Road. The dwelling as it sits, unfortunately, this is a little, it's tough to see, but the dwelling as it sits right now is in this particular location here. And this line here is the present location of the eroding shoreline. The intent is to move the dwelling from this location to the front of the lot, thereby needing a front yard setback waiver and also a side yard setback waiver. Now, this is the iteration of the plan that was eventually approved by the Conservation Commission. I will tell you that the original proposal had this side yard setback further or closer to that line, but in working with the neighbor, the Cianavas, who are, in fact, also a client of mine, we agreed that we would place this building or leave this building setback, the 15-foot required setback that's in the zoning district, the actual building line. What's inside the setback under this proposal is the AC unit or the exterior condensing unit. So we kept the house compliant with the zoning setback in the, the required zoning district of 15 feet. It's just that the AC condensing unit is within the side yard setback. We are currently in a lug two zoning district, which requires 35-foot front yard setback and a 15-foot side and rear setback. We're not asking for any expansion of the existing structure. We're essentially asking to move it on the lot in the same size and shape that it presently exists. So again, the house here is moving approximately from its present location at this corner, approximately 65 feet forward. Side yard setback here, front yard setback there, all again to accommodate the farthest point we can go from the eroding coastal bank. Staff report, staff recommended approval of the proposal. It's in your packet, and we feel that with regard to the charge that this board has with regard to granting variances that we do have, we meet the conditions essentially owing, relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant. And desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. Through the order of conditions process from the Conservation Commission, I believe the only abutter concern we had, again, was from the Cianavas. We did accommodate what his concern was. We did not receive any other concern at the Conservation Commission. And as of the issuance of package for this meeting, I do not believe any abutters sent any letters in, in opposition to, to the request. It is a similar request that's been made along the shoreline, whether it be further down on Madigat Road or Sheep Pond Road. Again, it's an attempt just to get the maximum amount of life from the structure on what is a rapidly eroding shoreline. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Can staff confirm that we received no mail on this one?
We did not receive any letters for this one.
Okay. And is there anyone with any questions?
Through you, Madam Chair. Paul, how soon do you need to move this?
Oddly enough, the sand has been building up in this area, but we all know that that's, through these last set of storms, we actually had more sand deposited in this area than, than we had expected.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you need us to sign the decision today.
No, this is, this is not an emergency situation. It's, we, we're, we presently, currently, this is, would take the standard process of, the next step would be, if this variance is granted, I'd go to the Board of Health with regard to the septic system. They have an order of conditions in place, and they'd go through the standard building permit process. It's by no means an emergency situation.
It's crazy to see how much they've lost since the 23 aerial.
Oh, isn't it?
Oh, my God. It's staggering.
Yeah. I mean, on average, we, obviously, when people are looking at properties in this area, I mean, the average probably in the Madigat area is, you know, 10 to 15 feet a year, but that, that's not how it happens. We may have a one winter, a series of nor'easters where, in this area, we've lost 50 feet in some cases, you know, in the, in this particular area. It just, it varies. I mean, the home to the, actually, it's on 49 Red Barn Road.
Is that the one that's on the aerial here?
Is 49 Red Barn, let's see. No, although it's further down, but 49 Red Barn, we came before this board maybe, I don't know, five or six years ago. And that home was moved in the same format this was, tucking it up as close as we could. And I didn't think that one had, that, that one's still standing. And it's just, at the very here, it's just, the pond itself here does act as kind of a relief of some of the energy of some of these storms. So if you'll notice long pond, how it's slowly filling in, I think in some cases, these homes get the benefit of the fact that the energy is sent to the pond. But, I mean, it's a precarious area. We can never tell. I mean, we may get two nor'easters this year that take another 20 or 30 feet. But through the last, through the last series of storms, it's actually, the sand is built up in this area. And I think they, they did move, they moved this one, I think, recently.
Oh, they did? I was wondering if that was-
Yeah, that one's been moved, the next one down has been moved. And then, obviously, this area here, the town has been dealing with the fact that they've lost Sheep Pond Road down, further down by Red Barn Road, and the town is in the process right now of working with all the abutters here to gain, to relocate the access to the majority of the homes in this particular area. I mentioned the Cianavas, but nine and 11 Hedaplanes Road have been more than generous over the past four or five years. They have a private driveway that they granted an easement to the town in which the majority of the homeowners that are accessing these particular areas are actually accessing it over a private drive with the benefit of an easement that's been granted to the town. Down along the Red Barn Road area now, that area, that new road will be constructed and access to these homes will be continued to be the way it used to be. But the section of Sheep Pond down further to the south here is completely gone.
So, Paul, I'm looking at this aerial that was in our packet. I'm guessing you submitted this?
No, actually, staff provided that to you.
Oh, okay, staff submitted. So this structure is going to remain 15 feet off of the side setback?
Yes.
And the front of the house will then be how far from the road?
The front of the actual foundation would be five feet off of the street, right, off of the, the Sheep Pond Road layout.
And then-
However, there's a porch in the front now.
I see that, yeah.
The porch would then project further out, but the actual foundation would be five foot setback.
So the porch would be on the actual road? No buffer?
Correct. Well, in the general location, it'll be right up to the edge of it, yeah. Unless they decided, once we may move it, to kind of eliminate the porch and just do a walkout deck or a landing out the front, and that would be the better option, quite honestly. But it was, it's going to be right on, it would be right up on the edge of the layout, because the edge of that travel way-
So between the road and the front of that front porch, there's zero setback.
Well, the layout, but not necessarily the traveled part of the road.
The travel part of the road is almost right. It's almost partly on the, it's partly on the lot, so.
It's hard to the one side.
So, more than likely, in that area, what we'd probably do is adjust, adjust the road in that area. We've got plenty of room in the layout.
In the layout to move the road.
And then just kind of adjust it in that location.
But you won't be in the road layout.
No.
No, it says the porch, it says the porch is back half a foot.
Where does it say that?
Eight tenths, so 10 inches.
Eight tenths, sorry. Yeah, oh, sorry, hold on.
Point eight.
But again, that's just taking the porch that's on the house currently.
Yeah.
I mean, I assume, there's no reason why when they come forward, they couldn't modify the porch that's out there and shorten it up. It doesn't have to be. That's just taking, this is exactly what's out there now and pulling it forward.
And is there a full foundation now and do they want to put in a full foundation?
I think it's a block crawl space is what it is.
And what would be the foundation of the-
The same thing. We're not asking for a full-
Yeah, that wouldn't make any money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, there actually was talk at one point from the owner too about potentially just putting it on piles.
Is this easier to move again?
Easier for when the ocean takes it.
Well, there's no, this is the last move, it can-
Yeah, this is it, right?
This is it.
This is it.
Yeah, let's go to somebody else.
The problem you have in this area is, you can't get any of these over the bridge. So they're either going to stay in this area or they're just going to be demolished.
But yet, they want to build a deck when they move it. They want to rebuild their deck.
Again, at least, I didn't, there wasn't a lot of thought, other than I took exactly what is out there now and I just pushed it forward.
Yep.
So, you know, once they go to the HTC, the deck may get shorter, the porch may, but the frame, the main body of the house will not change.
Yep.
Okay, okay. So-
I have one thing.
Sure.
I would, if you could, I would put it right on the line or even ask the town if you can go over.
We did that on Baxter Road in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I asked for that on Baxter Road for somebody.
The, the only thing I'd say about that, Joe, in this particular case is-
I mean, I don't, it's up to you.
No, what's going to happen is, before that happens, I'm going to lose the septic system. So at that point, it doesn't matter.
Because it's right there, anyway.
I could be, I could be forward, but I've got, I've still got to get a septic system on the lot and the well, and that's going to go before-
You're going to go for tight tank?
What's that?
Tight tank?
Tight tank, yeah. But still, the tight tank is here.
I understand.
The only place, so that's going to be, you know, whether I'm a few feet forward, more or less, is not going to help me.
And is that within the setbacks?
It doesn't matter. It's setback. It's, that only has to be 10 feet off the property lines under type five, which is the environmental-
From the front yard, from the front yard property line?
Any property line, a septic system has to be 10 feet under the stake by an hour ago.
And that's 10 feet.
And that'll meet that. Yeah, we're not asking for any waivers from Board of Health other than putting in the tech.
Okay. Is there someone with their hand up?
We do have someone with their hand up. He, he just lowered it, but Edmund, I believe the neighbor, sent me that?
Okay, if he, if he has something to say, that'd be-
Doesn't look like it. Uh-huh. See, back up?
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I, I've been in contact with Paul on this, and there's only one concern that I have, and it's probably not as much as concern for this, but it isn't in a practical sense.
It isn't what?
The practical sense.
Is he in a butter?
He's the gentleman who Mr. Santos also works with and they work together. They're direct about it.
Got it.
Edmund, we lost you. You're free to speak. Try to unmute.
I think what he was referring to, he said, is from a practical sense, and I think what he's talking about is, is this really worth the amount of time and effort that somebody may spend to move this, knowing that eventually, you know, where we're going to end up with it.
But is that his decision?
But I'm not speaking, I think that's what maybe Edmund was talking about.
Okay.
Did, did I get, I'm not sure if I got, if I was heard or not.
It's okay. Can you, I, I think we know who you are, but could you, for the record, just say your name again and your address?
Sure. 11, my name is Edmund Cianava. I'm at 11 Hedaplanes Road and also another adjacent lot, which is just Sheep Pond Road.
Okay, thank you. And you were, you were cut off right when you said your concern isn't really about this particular property, but that, the practical.
Right, and that is, you know, that, the house is generally used for rentals. People come in one week at a time and they leave. And I've had issues in the past where they've used our ladder, you know, going down to the beach. And I know that's been corrected now where they're not using ours, but I guess they put their own in. But one of the concerns that I have is for, these people come and they come with three, four cars and they park, and where are they going to park? Because vehicles do get, go down there to turn around, you have landscape vehicles, propane vehicles, they go, do get into that area and they have to turn around. And so that is a concern that I have, and I'm not sure how they can address it, and Paul may know better, that they plan to put something to the, you know, other side of the, the house, that they can just put their own vehicles there. But that's essentially the concern that I have.
Yeah, could you do that over the tank?
Yeah, if I could. Yeah, the, the tank itself would be designed as an, as an H20 tank and what we've done previously in this particular area, you'd be able to park over the tank.
Can we show parking on the plan?
And then, it's a single, it's a single-family home, the parking requirement in a lug.
Can we show the curb cut on the new plan?
It may only be, I think it's only one space. I'm sorry, it would be, we would park, as Edmund said, we'd come, right now, it's a loop driveway in front of the house, but we'd be parking in this area.
Okay.
And we could park right over the tank.
Okay. Okay. I don't, at least, you're suggesting, I don't think there's so much as a curb cut, isn't it just pretty much grass and dirt out there?
Yeah. Well, I just don't want this to turn into like beach parking and all of a sudden, all along the street, there's like seven cars or, you know, there, I know there isn't technically going to be a curb cut, but, I mean, I want to designate where parking will be allowed for how many vehicles for this piece of property, because the way that it lays out now, you could just basically kind of park at an angle like Main Street parking all along there and you could fit, I don't know how many vehicles, and I don't think we want that. So I think it's important to show where the designated parking for how many cars will be with this new idea, since there's no parking in front of the house anymore.
It's a single-family home, though, what is, what's the parking requirement?
I think it's only in a lug. We're in a lug two, I think it's only one or two spaces.
Practically, you should show two spaces, just show them over the tank.
Yeah, I'll show two spaces over the tank.
That way, this has a rental.
I'm happy to show two spaces designated over the tank.
It has, it has two-
Just something designated in case this turns into something that it's not right now, and we don't want it to do that.
Tracy?
Thank you, Tracy McDonald, real estate manager. This is working. Paul, I just had a question. Will they, is it working?
Do you want to go over to Paul's microphone? You guys can share.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Paul, I'll, uh-
Oh, yeah.
Well, what will they, well, what is route they'll take?
Yeah, this, this property would be accessed through the new-
So Tracy, just so we have it for the, so just say who you are again.
Tracy McDonald, real estate manager. So my question to Paul was, there's a new access road that's going to be going in, and what is, this parcel is the very sort of end, so what route would, would they use the new access road and what route would they would take?
Okay, thank you. So this property would be accessed by the new access road.
Okay, this is kind of outside our scope, but for informational purposes only.
It would not be accessed the way it's accessed now, which is over the Cianava property.
Right, but it plays into the roadway.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can't, right, it doesn't have, we can't, it's a single-family home, we can't-
Well, I'm just thinking of over the, for instance, beach, if this turns into a major access point as a beach and then people take the liberty to park as they do along the mountain.
Just nobody can, your mic's not on, but, but this-
Just want a designated for this lot where parking is allowed, I guess. I guess I shouldn't even.
Like a driveway?
Say I care about the, driveway and parking, where cars are going to be for the people that are going to live in this house with the new arrangement, since they don't have the. The access road doesn't matter to you, because that's. No, I'm just curious because I didn't know if it was going to be right along this property line of where we're approving to move this house to.
I don't think we can regulate on-street parking.
I think the only reason to show parking on this lot is because the neighbor brought up the issue, the question about where are the people that rent the house going to park?
Yeah, so if we have a plan that shows two parking spaces, which the applicant has said he can, he would do.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, basically it.
I will revise the plan that was submitted to show two co-compliant parking spaces and that's what will be appended to the year decision.
Great, yeah, thank you.
So if, is there anyone else online who has anything else to say? I don't think there's any, is there anyone in the audience who had anything else to say about this? I suggest we, unless anyone has anything else to add, that we close the public hearing and.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so voting. Joe, you asked questions on this one?
No, 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 it's good.
Okay.
Hundred percent. Aye for closing.
Okay, I guess I'll go for Joe this way then. So Lisa to Joe, all the, so did I get a second for that? Oh, Lisa?
Listen.
Okay, so Lisa made the motion, Elisa seconded, and all those in favor of closing the public hearing and moving to deliberations, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So.
I don't have anything to deliberate, I think it's, it's an appropriate application.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so then it looks like we're talking about putting, having a motion with the plan that's shown on page 19 to be revised to show the, the two parking spaces and would someone want to make that motion to grant the relief as requested?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So all those in favor of granting the variance as requested under section 13932A, I'm not going to read the whole description, and the amended plan showing two conforming parking spaces to be attached to the final decision, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, so that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business after this one?
So after this one, we do have, and I thought we had an, oh, I didn't print that page out, and other business, we were going to do. Oh, I thought we were going to do.
Yeah, we have.
I thought we were going to do elections and there was something else that said.
Yeah, we have election discussions about the fee schedule as well.
Yeah.
But I'm recused.
Yeah, but can you stay for that other part? Okay, so Lisa is recused on the next one. Are you recused on the next one? Okay, but you guys are going to stick around, right? Power's out downtown. Perfect. So we're not missing, I'm not missing work, perfect, okay. So Lisa and Sean are both recused, so one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so it's the five members sitting at the table that are going to be the board for this one. This is application 2025-0022. Robert and Catherine Hatcher, 72 Baxter Road, Mr. Gasparo is presenting, is he online?
I am.
Perfect, okay. Art, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm before the board today to request modification of existing special permit to alter the use of a pre-existing non-conforming structure by increasing the height of the structure within the setback by approximately six feet. This is a lot of record in SR20, it's about 7,600 square feet of size, and we are proposing renovation of the structure that would result in a modification of the height, but not an increase of the footprint within the setback area. The purpose of the project is to modify a more functional living area of essentially what's a very dated small home. The third bedroom on the first floor is being eliminated to allow for an expanded kitchen and wash area, washer dryer and a stairway. And then the third bedroom they have is being moved to the second floor and a bathroom added to make it more functional with a small office. And an existing bunk area in the second bedroom on the first floor is being eliminated, so effectively there's, there's really no sleeping area being added with the proposed change. And again, we believe that this would be in harmony with the, the code and the bylaw and not result in any sort of an adverse impact. We are aware of some correspondence for a butter that had some concerns with view of the lighthouse, you know, based on analysis that, that we've done using aerials and GIS, it appears that their view would be behind the structure and over the existing pool and that this, this change of height of the structure within the structure footprint doesn't appear that it would actually be in that view shed, though of course, we haven't been up in their house and I haven't seen any other evidence to, to support that, but that's, that's how it seems from using the aerials. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions or concerns, should the board or the public have them. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gasparo?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone down this end? Does anyone have any objections to the request?
I'm going to vote against it.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that I wanted to talk about the, or I guess, maybe we don't have to if, if everybody feels the same way, but the, the last decision, you know, that no additional structural improvement of any kind be allowed on the land of the petitioner. In looking at page 17. In that decision, they, they, they asked for relief to alter the dwelling within the existing footprint of the structures, but will not add a second story, although there were some roofline changes that will increase the height of the building. And they were, had asked then for deleting the condition that no additional structural improvement of any kind be allowed on the land of the petition, sorry, petitioner. I'm not inclined to, unless I, unless the board has different feelings and we get to a discussion about that or different agreement, I'm, I'm not inclined to allow additional structural improvement after it's already come back a few times.
I'm in agreement with you, I, I want to honor those conditions and I'm going to vote no on this too.
I agree, but Susan, what, you know, what's the purpose of putting these conditions in if we just, we'll, you know, wait?
Was there someone online who wanted to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, hold on one second. Bob, do you have any?
Nope.
No, okay. Okay, so let's, and, and sorry, before we get to, did, was there, was there mail on this one? There was one for and one against, is that this application?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one opposed and one in support.
Okay. Let's let the person online speak.
David Golden, you're free to speak.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
No.
If you could speak up a little bit, that would be great.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Sure.
Great, thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I, along with my wife, own number 70 Baxter Road, we are the butter just to the south of the applicant property, and we've owned the property since the year 2000. The applicant property is a small parcel, as you can tell from their formal filing, it's on a small lot, it's, it's a very dense property, the ground cover is almost twice what is currently allowed, it's almost 23% as compared to the 12 and a half percent. And in the 25 years that we've lived there, the house has, has grown as much as it can, there's the, the pool and the patio and the second dwelling essentially eliminate virtually all of the setbacks, there's a slight setback in the front along, along Baxter Road. So the claim that the applicant's not changing the footprint is a little disingenuous, there's really no place else to go at this point. And our concern was that the density of the house with a swimming pool and the patio was about as far as it should go. If you look up and down Baxter Road or even Sanctity to the west, you won't find an analogous property with so little setback and a second floor. So the incremental density from the application just gave us great, just gave us great cause. And with that, I'll stop unless there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wanted to speak? Is there anyone else online? Okay. Does, does anyone have any question for Mr. Gasparo, or it seems like we are ready to close the public hearing and.
If I could, Madam Chair?
Sure, yep.
Perhaps seeing the direction this is going, we could request a continuance to see if there was any other supporting information or, you know, that we, hearing your concerns that we may be able to provide. I would like to try to give the architects on the project, let them know, you know, the feedback from the board, I'm not sure how much it, you know, difference it would make, but I would like to at least be able to consult with them on the client if possible.
Sure, I would suggest, and I'm sure you have, but I don't know that they have, to pull those last three zoning decisions and really look at the conditions that were, the relief that was granted prior and the conditions that were put on them before, before we.
Understood.
See, okay, cool.
I think you should withdraw it.
Well.
I mean, we're going to kick it down the road, jam up the agenda, waste time, I mean.
Well, he might be able to, I don't know.
Yeah, work something out.
He might be able to work something out, so let's.
Could I make that motion to continue? Sorry.
Wait, first we need to close the public hearing.
To close the public hearing.
All right, so the, so, right, the applicant's made a request to continue to see if they're, and, and in the event that he doesn't come up with new information, he can also file a request to withdraw without prejudice.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, and so.
But.
I don't know what. I don't like to give the opportunity.
Be nice to people, it's nice.
Okay. Joe, all right, so Jim, all right, so first let's make the motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, is it possible to keep the public hearing open so that we could provide?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Believe if we were going to provide additional information, that would give the public the opportunity. And I respect Mr. Markley at this point, which is why I am trying to keep it very short.
Art, thank you for very nicely correcting me before I closed the public hearing, thank you. So.
Motion to continue.
Second.
All right, so Jim has made the motion to continue and Elisa seconded, and all those in favor of continuing to the October 16th regularly scheduled Town Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Okay. So. So we've, we've moved on and we're not going to talk about that application, so we can now talk about, I don't know why my stuff thing doesn't help, other stuff, but the other, the other thing is just, our next meeting is October 16th, that's after Columbus Day, right?
Yes.
And then, which is great, because typically it ends up being before, we always move it around. And thanks, I don't know why I don't have that, thank you. Okay. All right, so our next meeting is October 16th at 1:00 PM, and then we were requested by Plus to discuss the current ZBA fee schedule, including potential updates or revisions. Was anyone going to talk to us about, was Megan going to talk to us about that?
I can talk about it briefly.
Sure.
So as you all know, the ZBA fee schedule, it has been 450 for quite some time now. Megan and I sat down and reviewed like the hours it takes to process these applications, you know, send out the mailing, sometimes I had to do site visits and so on, so she felt like an increase was warranted, if you're so inclined.
Absolutely.
We're thinking about proposing it to 750. Currently, the 450 encompasses the application and also the mailings, but we want to do similar to the planning board where 750 for the application fee and then the mailing separately through Pitney Bowls, which roughly for each butter, I think it's a dollar 60 per butter, and that would be, the owners would be on the applicant to pay for that separately as well. So stuff for discussion, hear your thoughts. We do have to do a public hearing on this next month, today will just be discussion, we will not be voting today on this.
When is the last time the fees have been adjusted?
I think, I think I can help answer that. I was administrator at the time when we did it, so.
Probably 15 years?
And it was like 350 to 450.
It was 350 to 4, it was actually 300 to 450.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, we were cheap back then.
Yeah.
I think that's way, way too cheap.
It is.
It should be like 12, 1500 at least.
I know.
Have you looked at the?
I checked other towns as well, and it's similar to the 750, some towns are actually doing 1,000. I found one town, I don't remember the name, but it was 15, like for an appeal, so it varies.
How many hours are involved in you start to finish per, I mean, I know it depends on the complexity of the project, but, you know, on average?
On average, I mean, it depends on it, like I know Alicia for mailings, that takes her a few hours at the very least, because it's a lot of her butters, especially if it's in the OHD.
OHD, yeah.
And then to do the site visits, to review the application, I have to do research so I can formulate my staff report, so that's another maybe nine, 10 hours on average. It's a lot of time, it's like it's long overdue.
Not that it really matters, but is planning going to increase their fees as well?
Planning board?
Yeah.
I think they did, they're higher than us, I think, oh, Billy, there you go, I was about to say Billy could speak to that, thanks Billy.
I was, thank you, I, I just wanted to add in, there's also time drafting the decisions and, and that work as well, but the planning board's currently 500 for a special permit. MCDs get to be a little bit more expensive and require escrow and things like that, but I think the, the overall goal is to bring the planning board and the ZBA together. Special permit should be the same price regardless of the board.
I think, yeah, 12, 1500 to me.
That seems like a big jump, but.
No, no, this is, I mean.
I mean, no, I understand, but I'm, I'm wondering how is it in relation to.
Look, a plumber's $200, $200 an hour, come on.
Or if we're really getting down to it.
Okay, well, I don't want to get into that, but I think if that is a number that the planning staff has recommended and if that's what the planning board is going to, thinking about doing, I'm fine with that, but has the planning board discussed this yet? Billy?
Sorry about that, no, the planning board has not brought this up for discussion yet.
Okay, so perhaps we could say if, if we, if that's, if we are in agreement on that, maybe we could say 750 if that's what the planning board also agrees to, but we, we are also open to a higher.
Yeah.
Like a 1250.
I support whatever they think is reasonable, but with Joe's feeling that all the fees are probably low.
Yeah.
They're, they're real law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe the planning board should up their fees too, I just don't know.
No, that's what I'm saying, like if we're, if the goal is to get zoning and planning to match, if staff is saying, you know, suggesting 750, we're thinking 1250, like let, if the planning board hasn't discussed yet, if we could say, you know, we're, this is where we're thinking, so if they say, if they're like, oh, 1250 sounds great, then we're okay with that.
And procedurally, do we have to have this during a public hearing? So like even if we say, yes, we're good for 1250, we still have to discuss it again, right?
Yes.
Yeah. But I don't want to do it twice, like if the planning, if the goal is to have planning and zoning to match, like let's.
Most of the things we do give, when they do get their special permit or their variance, it adds an awful lot of value to their project. I mean, 1250 is de minimis, it really is.
Well, I don't think that's for us to judge, but I think what is for us to equate is the amount of time that it takes for the staff to do what is necessary to do before and after, and then you figure out within, you know, how much each person is paid, and then that's how you come up with the number.
Well, I don't think it, I don't think it's meant to offset their salary, I think it's just a fee for the town.
Well, then, well, then the town's output, let's call it, I mean, it's, it's not, that's the only way to equate the value of their time is by what they get paid per hour.
Oh, yeah, no.
And that's for them to figure out, but if they have 15 hours into something, the only way to figure out an explainable fee is to attach to those hours what it's worth to the town, let's say.
I think, I think, you know, there, but some applications are probably going to take less than 15 hours, and some will take a lot more, so it's just going to average out, but I agree, I, I agree, that's the way of quantifying it as a value.
Right.
Makes sense. So, and I know HCC raised their fees a few years ago and went quite a bit higher, and, you know, we all, you know, their process is a lot, tends to be a lot longer and time sensitive than, time involved than ours, so I think it makes sense, and I'd be, to John's point, if it's going to be discussed again, I mean, I'm in favor of what the planning board recommends.
And one other point, I don't think that a fee increase is necessarily going to dissuade anyone.
No.
You know, that's. Not 500 bucks.
Not 5, I mean, honestly, probably not even a thousand, it's probably not going up.
Who pays for, who pays for the town council when we have to send something to the town council? Does the applicant pay for that?
Now the town.
Well, we should get an escrow for that, that'd be more important than, than the raising the fee.
Or when you get an appeal, the town has to pay, or, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Hopefully that stuff is designated into, you know, I, I think it just goes into one town kitty, it doesn't get designated into, you know, legal fees for the.
Yeah, but the applicant should have to pay for that.
Well, that's a much, okay, so that, again, we're getting, we're getting off topic, but, but yeah, so, so does anyone have an objection to raising the fees?
No.
No, okay, so we can take the feedback back to Megan, and then you guys can figure out the planning board, and then at some point, we'll discuss it at a public hearing. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is election of officers, which is always so fun on this board. So up for election is Chair, I'm currently serving as Chair, Vice Chair, which is currently John, and Secretary, which is currently Alyssa. Does anyone else want to run for, or put their hand in for one of these positions? Oh, and can it be anyone, or does it have to be a full member, it can't, can it be an alternate? I don't think so.
No, it's a.
Okay, so does anyone want to nominate someone for a position, or do we put their hand in for a position?
I'll nominate Susan for Chairman.
This is, this is a winning lineup, cannot change it.
It really is.
It's taking us to the World Series.
Yes. I think having two lawyers as Chairman and Vice Chairman makes a lot of.
Yeah, I really don't feel qualified to even be the Secretary, but I'll take it if I have to.
I was the Secretary for years.
Okay.
I was Secretary, I think, before, weren't you Vice Chair?
Oh, I was Vice Chair.
Then we switched, we agreed we would.
I was Vice Chair under Ed. Thank God I never had, I really had to run a meeting.
Yeah, and then, yep.
So should we just keep going with the same wonderful team that we have?
So moved, right?
I feel so flattered.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so, who, so sorry, did someone, did you make a motion?
We should, we should do them one at a time.
Okay, so someone make a motion to keep the position of Chair as is me.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Someone make a motion for keeping the position of Vice Chair held by John Brusher.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And for Secretary, I need a motion to keep Alyssa Allen in her position as Secretary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, guys, another year, right, it's a one-year term?
Yeah.
We don't really do this every year, okay.
Feels like just yesterday.
It, it feels like a million years ago.
Well, we could change this and make it two years.
No, that's all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, okay, thank you, sorry. Okay, so I guess that is all for today, so we'll see, you got everybody back here in October.
Motion.
What?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was just going to ask for.